Board members, let's begin. We are running quite late. So, we're going to begin Agenda Item Number Three, the renaming policy and background conversation. I want to apologize to staff for making you wait so long and apologize to the members of the public who have been waiting for us. Thank you so much for being here and for sticking it out. This, just briefly, this work session is in response to a forum request by Ms. Darin Kofax that the board supported, that the school board gets some research and some background information on schools within the school system that we might want to, whose names we might want to change because of a connection to the Confederacy. And this is an important issue for our community. And also a request that we begin to develop a process and a regulation that the board can get behind. So that's what we're going to try to do today. I would just mention before we start that one of the schools that was identified by staff in their research is a school that's actually within the city of Fairfax. So you will notice that when we discuss it, we discuss it as a city with, a school within the city of Fairfax because the city of Fairfax has the authority to name or rename that school. Our board does not. So I don't want anyone in the community to think that that is on our list as our board having the authority to change it, but that's a conversation that certainly may well happen with the city of Fairfax School Board. And we have students who go there, so I'm sure that this board or members of this board would be engaged in that conversation. But we are not beginning it. So with that, we have John Torrey and John Foster here to help us get started.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. So as you mentioned, in February, the board directed the superintendent to bring to a work session the following information: Schools named after Confederate soldiers; schools named after individuals with Confederate ties; date that each school was named or renamed; and the reasoning and history for the name choice. In addition, direct the superintendent to develop a working process for action by the board informed by best practices, including community-wide engagement that the school board will follow once they determine what names should be considered for change. So three schools fall into the first category. Lee High School. And in the backup materials, there's extensive information about the history. Lee High School was named Lee High School on May 20th, 1958. The school was renamed Robert E. Lee High School on July 16th, 1963, at the request of the Lee High School Student Parent Teacher Association. The reasoning behind the name change in 1963 was not recorded. The second, the second school is Mosby Woods Elementary, named on April 2nd, 1963. It was named after the subdivision, which was dedicated in 1961 and named after John Mosby, who was a cavalry battalion commander for the Confederacy. And then, as Ms. Hines indicated, there's a third school in the city of Fairfax, and any decision to rename that school rests with the city of Fairfax School Board. And then, in the second category, schools named after individuals with Confederate ties. There are four schools, based on our research, that fall into that category, all elementary schools: Haycock, Lee's Corner, Sangster, and Shreve Wood. A little background on each: Haycock, four sons of John Haycock and Jeanette Gunno voted for secession; two of the sons enlisted as privates in the Confederate Army. Lee's Corner, does not appear to be any direct connection to Robert E. Lee. William Fairfax Lee was the owner of a plantation and voted in favor of secession, and there's no evidence that Lee or his children fought in the Civil War on either side. Sangster was named after the family of Edward Sangster, a Fairfax County sheriff and farmer, and his wife. During the war, three of their sons fought for the Confederacy. And then, Shreve Wood Elementary, named for the Shreve Wood subdivision, which was built in 1955. And the name is connected to William Henry Shreve and his family, who lived in that vicinity in the 19th century. William Henry Shreve voted in favor of secession, and two of his children served in the Confederate And then, just as background, these are the sources that we have used for determining the schools that fall into these two different categories. And you can see, it ranges from interviews with current and former staff, yearbooks, newsletters, school board minutes, and then, sources also include local historical societies. And so, Dr. Braybrand, I believe now, will walk you through the proposed change to the regulation.
So you did direct me at the forum to look at a way that we could look at future engagement on this issue. And what we did really is looked at best practices around the country of other school divisions that had been involved in renaming. So I'm going to go through, really, what the proposed change to the regulation would be. And then, we have, I believe, as an attachment, that you got the original regulation with the strike-through and then, in Section Four, what the new language would be. And again, what I am proposing in the regulation is simply Section Four, not the entire regulation, but just Section Four, which is around renaming existing school facilities. So, the new, the new Section Four, if you will, of the regulation would be three components. First, A, it shall be the responsibility of the school board to select names for all schools and school facilities. The school board may rename a school or school facility upon determination that it is appropriate to do so. Such an action will be initiated by at least one magisterial school board member representing students attending that facility and one at-large school member. So that is Section A of, or that is, you know, Section A of Section Four. Let me go to the next slide and show you what B would look like. B says, "The renaming of any schools or school facilities will be preceded by a period of at least one month during which members of the community may submit suggestions to the school board for consideration. Public notice of the school board's intent to rename a school or school facility will be made in a public session of the board and will be considered the beginning of the public input period. Public announcements will be used to notify the community of the board's requests for suggestions." So, once there was a board meeting about the renaming, there would be a one-month minimum public input period. And then, Section C says, "At least one magisterial school board member representing students attending that facility and one at-large school board member will coordinate the suggestions from the community and forward those suggestions after review to the school board for its consideration and action, after a one-month public comment period on the suggested names." These changes really represent a, what I feel is a more expedited process for renaming. When I arrived, as you all know, this board was involved in a, in a very lengthy discussion around renaming. The regulation here really provides one month of public input about names, and then, one month after the names have been done for public comment on those, on the suggested name or names. So, I really think this allows the board to have an expedited process. It also eliminates what was in the prior regulation for a voting process that was only for pyramid-eligible folks. And I, in my view, I felt that the issues, these issues, go beyond any one particular pyramid and really are the responsibility of the entire county and the school board for deciding. And I think the staff time honestly devoted to trying to operate the, that election process and the waiting and the discussions that I experienced with you around that did not help us get, in my view, to the consensus that the board needs on issues of this magnitude. So I didn't think that that process helped the board. I think it more hindered it. So I think this is a streamlined process for the board to consider as it looks at the answers to the questions that we've given you. Let me see, do we have one more there, or was that it? As I said, we do have the original regulation with the strike-throughs. John Foster is Division Counsel, worked with me to review that language. And we looked at other school systems as they were going through their renaming process of school facilities to look at their regulation language. Just want to remind you, this is not a policy, right? The policy remains the same for the school board with the authority for renaming, but this regulation about how to do it, I have made a tweak to Section Four, which I think expedites the board's ability to engage in renaming as it sees fit. So we'll be glad, Mr. Torrey and I, and Mr. Foster, to take any questions. Ms. Foster, did you have any comments you wanted to make beyond mine? So we'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. That's a good reminder. The board does not vote on regulations, right? This is not a policy, we already have our policy. But obviously, we need to understand this and feel comfortable with it, so there'll probably be a lot of questions. Beginning with Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Oh, well, thank you very much, Dr. Braybrand. I think this is an important topic. First of all, I did want to recognize that we have a number of members of the community in the audience who were part of advocating for the Justice High School name change, so thank you very much for joining us today for this conversation. We appreciate your advocacy. I had, this, this certainly is much simpler, and I will say, as the board member who, you know, probably most lived and breathed the Justice High School name change, simpler may very well be, be better. It is certainly a significant departure from what we do for just plain naming schools, though. Are you anticipating, if we do this for the renaming, that you will do the parallel work of changing the policy for naming schools? Because it, the earlier one was, was modeled on how we name schools.
So, Ms. Evans, that's a very fair question, and the honest answer is, I did not spend extensive staff time engaging in looking at the naming of a new facility based on this. So that would have to be something I'd have to go back, really, with staff and do a deeper reflection on to appropriately answer.
Okay. So, and can you tell us who all was involved in developing this, other than yourself?
I spent time with the cabinet, and the cabinet represents the Chief Equity Officer, the Chief Operating Officer, the Deputy, the Lead RAS, or Region Assistant Superintendent, which is Dr. Zitulaga, representing our school regions, the Division Counsel, the Chief Communications, Executive Director for Communications, Mr. Torrey, and myself. And so, Cabinet is our highest level of senior leadership in the system, and we spent several meetings going through, one, the information that John and his team gathered around names, and then for the regulation, going through and, you know, sort of pushing each other back and forth about debriefing what we experienced in this process before with renaming and looking at how we thought we could have a regulation that would, and I don't want to say necessarily that it would be more simple, but I think more streamlined and easier to understand for both board members and the community. And for me, I do think that if a decision of this magnitude is made, there's an appropriate balance between not enough time and too much time. And the board ultimately, you know, can help me think that through, but I thought two years was simply too long of a process. This is, this is-
Actually, three.
Three. Sorry, I wasn't there for that, that beginning.
Right.
But this really, I think, is an appropriate balance and a balance that we saw other communities, and Mr. Foster can help me here, around that time of about a month each. A month for the first, for the intent to rename a school, and then a month beyond the renaming for determining whether the name suggested would be the name that the board would go with. So that's really a two, a two to really three-month period, and we think that's a more reasonable scope of time than two to three years.
Yeah. Well, I certainly would agree with that. So I will look very carefully at the details here. I do think that this is a topic, a very important topic, that we, we need to contemplate how we are going to address this to reflect community values in the future. So, thank you for your work, and I'm sure I'll have more questions later. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I misspoke. Ms. Keys-Gumara, followed by Mr. Moon, and then, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. First of all, Dr. Braybrand, thank you. I wholeheartedly agree with your comments with respect to time. I think we both came in, in the middle of that process, and we were spared the, the previous ground-digging years, but certainly, we need to deal with this in a short time period. And I think that it's certainly appropriate to deal with this topic, and it's, the historical review is consistent with the research that I had done prior to the renaming, and so that's completely appropriate. With respect to, I do have some concerns about the clarity of the process. So I want to go to page six first, I believe. Okay. And it says, "It shall be the responsibility of the school board to select names." That I agree with. The school board may rename. Such an action, such an action will be initiated by at least one magisterial school board member representing students attending that facility and one at-large school board member. And my question has to do with my understanding of the statute for establishing the school board. This seems to require a magisterial person from that district, which is certainly appropriate for them to participate, but I, but it's my understanding that the at-large members also represent that district. And so, I'm wondering why, why we couldn't have some other combinations? I, I'm not saying we've had that difficulty in the past, but it could, well, the situation could arise where the magisterial district is not hearing a part of that district, or they disagree, or whatever. And I'm wondering if there could be some other combinations. I don't think the statute requires this breakdown, so I'm wondering what your thinking was.
Yeah. The statute doesn't require it, and again, Mr. Foster can check me on that, but I don't believe it does. We used, if you see the strike-through language, this was actually the original language from the old regulation. It says, "Such an action will be initiated by at least one magisterial school board member representing students attending that facility and an at-large." And it said, "During a school board forum." So we've taken out "forum," but we've kept the consistency piece. One other little piece here. This says, "One, at least one magisterial school board member representing students attending that facility." This really depends, when you look at the magisterial district and the school, there are some schools that have multiple magisterial districts with students attending that facility. So that would, to your point, it, it could potentially vary, and it isn't saying that all magisterial members need to initiate that action. It's saying, "At least one from the, at least one representing students that attend that facility." Nor does it say that the facility has to be in the magisterial district, right? It's that students, I'm just telling you what it says, just because I know I can see where others are going.
I understand what it says, Dr. Braybrand. I'm trying to understand how we le, took a leap from the statute, which we're governed by the Dillon Rule, and we're governed in the state of Virginia. We, all of our authority emanates from a statute. That statute does not limit how an at-large versus a magisterial representative acts. And so, for that reason, I would have some concern about limiting, and there are certainly schools where there is one magisterial district. And so, I am anticipating, even though I think it's our job to, to look at the worst-case scenario, not that it has happened in the past, but if there were a magis, one magisterial person, and there was a disagreement between the community and that magisterial district person, I think we, as a next step, I would like for us to look at other possible combinations. That's one com, that's one comment. And I have, did you guys have the timer on while he was talking?
No.
Okay. That's okay. Then I can do, I'll do a, I'll do a comeback, because I have another concern. Okay.
My, my short answer is, I lifted it from the prior regulation. I didn't go back before that, and I look forward to hearing the rest of the conversation from the board. I understand your point.
Okay. Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders and Mr. McElvee.
Thank you. I certainly agree that a change of store to justice took way too long. You know, three years, they were way too long. We are trying to avoid that this time, but since, you know, Superintendent mentioned the regulations are within the purview of a superintendent as opposed to the, as opposed to a school board, but since this is important enough, the implications of the changes being proposed in this regulation is important enough to engage or hear the feedback from the school board. You are bringing this to the school board work session, per school board's request. So my question to my colleagues' consideration is this: If the board in the future, let's say that we, we accept the regulations, change the regulations as proposed, and going forward, school board feels that we need to tweak a little further on the regulations, are you going to require further discussion by the board to have a tweak to the regulations? Or are we going to just shoot it over to a superintendent? This is your regulation, you do what you need to do, and we'll just leave it completely up to you? Whether it's going to be our expectations for the school board to have authority to continuously bless or not bless any further change to the regulation? I ask you that because one of the provisions, I probably need to give a little more thinking to it, and then also hear from my colleagues as well, but when you put, you know, for example, you put in C a one-month public comment, you put one month in C, when in B, you put at least one month. Seems to make a distinction between at least one month versus, in C is a one month. So if a board in its own infinite wisdom at some time in the future decide that we need a little more than one month, but regulation says one month, I'm going to be bound to that unless superintendent agrees to change the regulation. So that's a question and something for the board to think about. And another thing is, if I look at the Section B, it has, hold on a second. No, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to C, when it says, "At least one magisterial school board member representing the district and one at-large." Especially where we have more than one magisterial district board members having students attending one particular school. We all know that under the sunshine law, when you have more than two school board members, that it constitutes a meeting, and everything has to be done in public with a prior notice to public, so public be able to observe what you are doing. If there are three board members coordinating this, that has to be transparent, has to done it in public setting. Whether that was ever envisioned when someone was working on this regulation change, or that was going to be done just behind the scene by two board members? That's my question to whoever proposed this.
In my, in my thinking, well, let me say one thing upfront. I'm here to partner with you, and I'm, I, I would like to hear the conversations. I, I don't want you to think that we need to spend weeks and months and months if you've got a sense about a word or two to add at least to Section C, right? I mean, that's something, just listening and talking to you, you know, I don't, if there's real consensus about tweaks like that, I'm certainly willing to consider them. I definitely would love to hear from the board, because there is, there is a piece here that Ms. Keys-Gumara raised about the role of an individual magisterial and at-large versus the board of a whole. So that's something I think I would really want, while it may be my regulate, the superintendent's regulation, it does have an impact on the board, and I'd want to have a better sense of that. But when we were doing this, we were really envisioning that it was probably just two people, one magisterial and one at-large. And if you think we need to be clear to say, "One and no more than those two," we could do that for, for board clarity.
Could I have one, just one quick follow-up, Ms. Hines? As to that, Mr. Foster, you may be in a better position to answer this follow-up questions. It is some of my understanding that even though it may not be officially designated as such, however, when there is a sort of ad hoc committee or committee of the board is formed to work on certain school board business, and I could consider the C, Section C, even, even if it's two board members, if the board is delegating two board members to work on determination about the name to propose to the full board, that can be considered a committee or a subcommittee of the entire board. That is subject to sunshine laws. Am I completely off?
So you're right under Virginia FOIA, Mr. Moon, that, that there are some scenarios where less than three board members could be considered to be convening a public meeting, but it is a very fact-intensive inquiry. And so, I would want to look at, in the particulars here, whether it would rise to that level or not. I do also want to note, as Dr. Braybrand did, that under the previous regulation, this same two-member approach was, was taken. And my recollection is, the last time we did this with the Stewart High School renaming, we did not treat those two board members working on it as requiring a public meeting. But again, I'd, I'd have to look at it under this new scenario.
With the public scrutiny ever increasing, I think we just need to be careful with every step we take. So that's where I'm seeking your input.
Okay. Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Mr. McElvee and Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Braybrand, to you and your whole leadership team for the work that you've done on this. I'm going to try to raise this conversation to a different level, which is going back to the forum topic and what instruments we have available to us as a board. So the forum topic actually says to modify our school naming slash renaming policy. And then, when I go to our policy, which is 8170 dot six, that policy has, under guidelines, it says that schools may be renamed, I'm paraphrasing, for some other compelling need. Now, I'm going to go back to the forum topic, which says that we must examine in a transparent and comprehensive way the criteria by which FCPS can name or rename appropriately. This discussion should have an intentional examination of schools that are named after Confederate soldiers or named after individuals with Confederate ties. And further down, it talks about the need for the criteria, or, well, earlier, we talked about the criteria, and further down, we talk about developing a working process. The working process, as I understand the way that we operate as a board, is our regulations. That's the working process. But what we haven't addressed here is, do we need to change our policy? Because our policy states a compelling need and doesn't define a compelling need. And so, what I'm wondering as a board is, do we have to, because we agreed to this forum topic, really ask the superintendent how you would modify the policy to, to incorporate the language out of our forum topic that was so artfully and elegantly prepared by Ms. Darin Kofax?
So my, my best, and Mr. Foster can jump in, we looked at the policy, and then, we, we felt that the policy as it was could stand unless the board really chose to want to change it, that the policy could work in conjunction with the proposed regulation change and didn't need to be changed in and of itself. If the board, based on its past experiences or just current understandings, thinks the policy itself needs changed, obviously, that's the board's decision to make. My own review of it was that the policy itself didn't need changed what, the big, again, only one person, one perspective, I came at a point in time. The biggest thing we've done here is, I've changed the regulation to change the time. If we're going to make these kind of decisions, we need to be doing them in a defined timeframe. And I think my feedback was, there was frustration on both sides about it's time to make a decision. And so, this regulation really more clearly puts up a timeframe for when the issue of renaming is to be brought up, and then the decision, once a name is brought forward, to be done. So- to be done. So again, that was our perspective, maybe limited, but I didn't think a policy change was required, based on my own team's review of the work.
So the forum topic actually calls for a comprehensive way, comprehensive way, the criteria by which FCPS can name or rename schools appropriately. So we have a process defined in the regulation that you've put forth, and that's, that's a step in the right direction. I guess my question is, the criteria, because you have a couple of different pages here. You have one, which is schools named after Confederate soldiers, and then you have another one, which is schools that are, that have ties. So if you were to look at criteria, what is the criteria that you think should be used? Because you put forth a different list.
Yeah. The forum asked, the forum asked us to do both. Your policy says a compelling need, and I think I'm hearing your question correctly. Did I, did I define the compelling need deeper in the regulation? I did not. I do think it's a fair question for the board, what defines a compelling need, right? Both of these, both of these forum topics asked us to assess involvement in the Confederacy, either as a soldier or those with ties to the Confederacy. And my honest feedback is, I think the board needs to help working with, I think it's a board decision to figure out the criteria beyond a compelling need. And, you know, I'd leave it for the board. We separated it out to two separate groups. As you know, there's two schools in Fairfax County that have, that are named after Confederate soldiers, and then there's a few other schools named for families, and it's not the father, but maybe a son or whatever. I think those are separate questions. But I did not elucidate or elaborate beyond what your current policy was.
Thank you. Mr. McElvein, Ms. Strauss, and Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. So first, I do want to say that I'm grateful to Ms. Darnett Kofax for bringing this forward to the forum, and to everyone who has brought it up for our consideration today. I do believe this board has a significant amount of unfinished work on this issue. Back in the summer of 2015, I had done a fairly deep document search in the aftermath of the Charleston shooting, and looking into our school board archives, local archives, including newspapers, meeting minutes, and other things, some of which has been laid out for the board. But what the board meeting minutes did mention, and I have not yet been able to locate, is a memorandum to the board from W.T. Woodson on the naming of Lee High School and of Justice High School, and both in the 1958 and 1963 timelines. And so when I brought this issue up previously, Mr. Torrey's predecessor had actually been going through the communications department archives, and had said that he had been unable to locate anything. But I would like to re-up that request as a next step, to try and locate the memorandum from Superintendent Woodson to the board. And that would encompass that meeting in 1958, as well as the meeting in 1963, when the renaming occurred. My second question to those who have, who have put together this documentation for us, you mentioned a lot of look into records, Facebook groups, other things that have examined our history. Has there been a determination that everyone who was on the school board, the leadership team, and part of the, to be named, Robert E. Lee High School PTSA is now deceased?
I don't know.
There could be living people.
Possibly. I don't know if we know the answer to that.
I do think we need, we need to find that out, because there are a lot of unanswered questions here. And I think as part of this, we need to have a final word when it comes to the history of these things. So that I would also treat as a next step. So, next question, my remaining few seconds. Dr. Brabran, the way I read this, this new wording is that it's essentially removing the superintendent and staff from the process. Is that purposeful? And is that a correct reading of this?
It is purposeful in the sense that this, I think the community has its oversight of the school system through an elected school board. And my own belief was, honestly, that the superintendent and staff's role in the process before did not help bring the process to the kind of closure that I think needs to happen, regardless of what decision, regardless of the decision made or would be made in any situation. I've looked, and Mr. Foster and I looked at other districts, and the level of staff involvement there was much less. So yes, it was intentional. I think, again, I came at the end, but I felt like things had gotten mired down, and the essential issue, the issue at hand had somewhat gotten muddied, and all these other things. How did we do the waiting? How did we do the elections process? How did we do the ad hoc committee? And I don't think that's in the best interest. I don't believe it's in the best interest of Fairfax County Public Schools to go through another two- or three-year process. I think the board needs to decide what, they asked two questions, which to me, as superintendent, I take your two questions as two potential criteria. Is the use of Confederate soldiers' names on school buildings appropriate for Fairfax County Public Schools? And then secondly, is use of names associated with someone who may have been through a child or relative or family member? Those are two distinct criteria. I think the, I think the board, and I think the community would prefer that the board make that decision, not the superintendent. And then based on that criteria, I would work to carry out this regulation as it's put forth. But I don't think, in the prior regulation, the superintendent brought forth the names to the board. Remember? It was me to bring you the names. And I don't think a community should have a non-elected leader with that kind of responsibility. That's, that's my honest assessment.
So, thank you. To probe this a little further, the board then cannot expect staff support beyond the school board office staff? Yes or no?
Well, I'm going to try to help some here. I mean...
In what, in what way?
I would certainly help with communications, with trying to facilitate if board members, one of the things we found, some, some school boards had public hearings, like the normal public hearings you would have for a budget process. Some had hearings that involved being at the community site and at the school board. Some were just at community sites. So, I mean, we would facilitate and support the board, much like if you were having a board member town hall, or a board member ad hoc committee. But I don't think the final list of name or names should reside with the superintendent, and I did erase, I did omit that from this regulation.
Okay. So my recommendation then is to include some language about staff helping to facilitate board communications on this issue. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. McLaughlin and Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, and thank you for coming back to us with a more simplified process. Certainly, the process we went through to get to justice was very long and arduous. And if there is interest in, in another, in, you know, any other renaming situations, I agree with you, Dr. Brabran, that the responsibility rests on school board members. I do believe the magisterial district member for that school needs to be involved. And I support adding the language that would say that we would have some staff support in going through this. So I also believe that in the historical identification of schools that were specifically named for specific people, that that probably is, is a more interesting list. I am, I am, well, depending on whatever boards in the future want to do, I'm, I'm a little less interested in schools that are named for roads, just because that doesn't necessarily mean that you are speaking or naming or honoring a specific person. So I think those are, those are my only comments, but thank you, and I appreciate, we needed to fix this. I would, and I guess it was Ms. Evans asked about naming for a new school, because in the past, when we've named a new school, we've had sort of these larger town hall meetings. But again, they are led by the magisterial district school board member. And I suppose, if the magisterial, you know, comes back into our court, we could still have such a town hall, have the community help suggest names, et cetera. But in, even with those, the school board member would come forward with, I believe, with the name or names for a new school. Those, usually those namings have been less controversial than a renaming. But anyway, thank you, Dr. Brabran, for coming forward with this.
I think I can better answer your question now, because it was Sandy's earlier. I did not sense frustration with the current regulation for naming new facilities. I did, upon my arrival, sense great frustration by multiple board members, frankly, on both sides of the issue, about the process that we engaged in. And I don't want, honestly, I do not want to go through another process like the process that I came onto in the end. It felt to me that it was dividing the community and causing more mistrust than trust. So if we're going to return to looking at renaming school facilities, I think we need a process that's more streamlined. And that's why, really, I only had staff and myself focused on that one section. As I said to Ms. Evans before, I didn't really take a deep dive back, but I don't think that area was a source of community and board frustration the way this section was. So that's why our efforts and focus was just on section four.
Thank you. I would, yeah, and I would agree with you on that. And just one, one of the things that we had also asked as a follow-on, I remember when we were doing this, was to research all, finish researching all the names of the schools in the county, and Jeff Clark has done that. And, and if you have nothing to do late at night, and what's in a name, which is now on Channel 21, they are wonderful, and I think they have finished it. They're very interesting historicals.
Close to being finished, about 140, I think Jeff is up to about 140 schools now.
And they, and it's a wonderful, wonderful job. They are very well researched, and Jeff has done a great job of putting that up for TV. Great work.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Schultz.
So first of all, I do want to remind my colleagues that when we went through this very difficult community process, partly because, as Dr. Brabran noted, there was the policy, and then there was the regulation, and how did we execute on it. But one of the things we talked about when we were addressing the changing Jeb Stewart and ultimately reaching Justice High School, was that several of us brought up the fact that how can you let stand the name Robert E. Lee High School, while we were all under strong conviction that having schools named after a Confederate officer was inappropriate? And there are people sitting around this board table who were on camera saying that Robert E. Lee would be, was a whole different thing. So it's not. And so I want to refresh everybody's memory that we somehow said it was going to be different. And I guess the reason why I want to refresh everybody's memory on this is because the Board of Supervisors just recently renamed the Robert E. Lee Recreational Center. It's now just the Lee District Rec Center. And what I'm hoping is that we could maybe learn from their process, which, to my knowledge, did not divide the community, did not create a lot of angst and, and really deep pain in terms of the process. So I guess I would say, from a next step, and I wish we were having this information now, is what did the Board of Supervisors undertake to do it? Because this, this has been a long time coming. There's, people have been asking us to look to this school name. One of the things I'm proud of this board that we were dedicated to doing was, we had a policy that said we would be working with our community. We are elected, that is absolutely true, and it is our responsibility ultimately into be naming and renaming schools. But we are elected to represent our community, and we tried our best, under the circumstances, to identify how do we, as elected members, best get information from our community about what to do. But having gone through that experience, and what we put our communities through, I'm looking at, how do we do this in the least painful process? And so that, that I would really ask for everybody to be reflecting on, is that we're trying to do this a second time again, and the Board of Supervisors, maybe a way for us to look at that, in terms of a streamlined approach, and one that doesn't become protracted for the community. And then the final point I'd like to make is, in the future, I would really appreciate when the board is having work sessions like this, we are able to gather together all of the pertinent documents. We do not have posted our school board policy. So we're looking at a regulation in a vacuum. The school board policy should be posted, so we can do the crosswalk, because actually, this regulation doesn't follow the policy, as I remember, in terms of just language. So that's one piece. Secondly...
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Would you like a go-back? You're over.
I know. I'm just going to wrap up this point, then, which is, we don't have the follow-on motion from Ms. Darnett Kofax, July 2017, which I think we also should have had for today's discussion. And I would like that as a next step.
Perhaps, Madam Clerk, do you think you could email to the board at some time, you know, in the, in the next few minutes, not to put any pressure on you, but the, the policy and also the follow-on motion from, and I don't remember what date that was...
It was from July. I mean, I had asked for...
By 2017.
It was also kind of in my forum topic, which was to, which, sorry, I need to direct the super, blah, 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 blah. The dates at each school was named or renamed, and the reasoning history for each name choice. And that, and that was, and then, that's what I...
Then it must be your follow-on motion from October 2017. We did one that said they'd have to go back and define how many different terms. Remember that?
Well, that wasn't mine. Mine was just specifically, what are the names? Where is there any kind of tie to schools named after individuals with Confederate ties, or schools named after Confederate soldiers? And that, that's what the what in the name is. But that's the essence of what my follow-on was.
Which sounds very much like your forum topic. Right. It's pretty much, Ms. McLaughlin, if you can think of another one and give us a date, we'll see if we can find it. We have Mr. Wilson, Ms. Schultz, and Ms. Darnett Kofax.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hines. I want to start by saying to Dr. Brabran, thank you for making this effort and bringing this to the board. This was obviously a difficult situation that you came into when you joined this, the division, and you participated in helping us get through it. And, and, you know, it was a rough, a rough assignment right out of the, out of the box. Having said that, I think that it was sort of the implementation of our own regulations that created some of the difficulties that we had. And so in that sense, I guess I echo a little bit about what Mr. McElvein is saying. It looks kind of like in the regulation redraft, it's sort of like, well, that didn't work out so good. Now we're going to push this back on the, on the board, because this is really a political discussion. And there, and, and that may be right, and that may be what the board should do. But that's, when I read this, I was sort of surprised, because all of the details of the process aren't included. So for example, you know, one of the, I think probably the most significant aspect of the difficulties we had was, there wasn't community consensus on the renaming. And how do you suggest that this improves on that issue? Or are, or are you saying it doesn't, you're just going to push it back to the school board?
Well, let me, let me say a couple of things. One, I had Mr. Foster pull other school divisions that have recently renamed schools, and Mr. Foster, you know, elaborate where I'm off. And we looked at their language, both for school board, school board involvement and staff involvement. And... And, almost to a T, all of the other systems had most of the, had most of the work really being done with the school board and not with the staff. And, again, I think these things are of the nature that people who are non-elected officials shouldn't be having a decisive hand in the outcome of how it goes. And I think the prior regulation had staff involved beyond what was necessary to conduct the change. I do want to say, just on your comment and Mr. McAveen's, I have no problem, we can easily go back, and I'll commit right now to going back, if the Board has consensus, to putting in about support for communications and implementation. And, it's not about walking away from that part of it. But, the naming process itself, the voting, the only pyramid eligible, the superintendent bringing the list of names, I had great discomfort in carrying out that regulation, and I don't think it served the community well. I don't think it served staff well. And honestly, I don't think it served the school board well either, because, again, as I said, you were investing in a non-elected person, something of significant community interest and value to make a determination about. Honestly, if you read the old reg, I could have brought five names. I mean, I had wide latitude in the names that I could have brought this Board. And, again, I just didn't feel, I didn't feel that regulation served the school system or the community well. And most of the other regulations I looked at were more of constructive in the way we've brought for this regulation than our prior one.
Okay, thank you. I would just echo what Mr. Moon said about consistency within the regulation, if these changes are to take place. I would note that the next Section 5 deals with renaming of non-school facilities, and again, there's a timeframe in there, a process in there. And I think, given these changes, if we're going to incorporate them and move forward on this, they should be consistent. A second question I had was, what did the final cost of the renaming come in at? Do we have a final number on that, or maybe we don't have it yet?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, it looks like we have about $453,000 was in the budget for our justice renaming. And that looked at the typical items of athletic uniforms, performing arts uniforms, internal and external logos, and turf.
So, thank you for that. I mean, that's actually a pretty good result. I think during our discussions, it was, it sort of had these wild variations in terms of what it was going to cost. That number sounds a bit lower than what we, some people were expecting. So, we just finished the end-of-year discussion of our budget, and that number, I think, maybe we should be talking about this in terms of, you know, just, if, I sense that the Board wants to go ahead and make changes to some of the school names that we have. It's a budget matter, it's a balancing of priorities, and we just finished the end-of-year budget, and there seemed to be a lot of money left on the table that we carried over. And so, I think if we want to have that discussion, we should just have that discussion, and in terms of, you know, avoiding future protracted, difficult conversations, I think just taking care of the problem might be the answer. And finally, I would just say that I recently spent a little time with my family in Cambridge, Maryland. I spent several hours at the Harriet Tubman Museum. I think it's an incredible museum. If you haven't been there, everyone should spend some time to go up there. It's a part of the, I think, the Smithsonian or the National Park Service museums. It's fantastic. One of the things that they mentioned, they've got a display on the wall, and I'm sorry for going a little over time, is that the $20 bill is going to have Harriet Tubman on it. So, maybe we can get out in front of the Harriet Tubman craze that's going to happen once her $20 bill comes out, and name a school after Harriet Tubman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Darrenat Kofax, and Ms. Palczek.
So, I guess I expected, because we've been waiting for this for a long time, I guess I expected there to be some detail. The whole problem last time was that there was a set of rules, and then the outcome didn't fit what was wanted, then the rules changed, then, and that's how we got to three years, is the rules just kept, we just kept moving the goalposts until we got the solution that we wanted. So, when I look at, so, basically, A says, it's our responsibility. It's up to us, and it's our responsibility. B says that, and it's sort of like, it says, if you're going to do it, you've got to give at least 30 days. But then it says, in the middle of B, it starts, "Public notice of the school board's intent to rename a school or school facility will be made in a public session of the Board and will be considered the beginning of the public input period." So, the public doesn't know anything about it, the school board announces it at a public meeting, and that's the beginning of the public's awareness, and that starts the 30 days, and at the end of the 30 days, I don't know what happens during those 30 days, there's nothing here, and then it's over. And then, the thing that precipitates it, which it says, "Public notice of the school board's intent to rename." All of this, it's like, again, it's the inverse of what should happen in a process. This basically says, and then the C says, it'll be two people, one Magisterial and one at-large. And then we have the FOIA issues that have been brought up. So, really, it can only be two, because otherwise you're going to a public meeting. So, two people on a 12-member Board who are elected, who don't have individual authority, we only have authority as a Board, but two people, as a subset, get to decide behind the scenes in a non-transparent way that they want to change the name. They get to announce it at a school board meeting, the clock starts ticking, and the community has 30 days to input, and it doesn't matter anyway, because you go right back up to A, which is, it's the responsibility of the school board to change the name. I mean, on circular logic, I don't understand where there's any authentic public, like, where's the public driving this? You know, they're not our schools. It's not our schools, it's not our money. I've always said this, they're public schools with public money for public benefit. And, we're supposed to represent the public, not impose our will on the public. And it's one thing for a Board of 12 to make a decision and impose a decision on the public. It's another that two people, as a subset of this, can decide on their own, basically, the way this is written, two people, we decide that we're going to change the name, and we're going to announce it, and the clock starts ticking, and there's really no meat here about what happens, and then the school board decides.
Speaking of clock ticking, you've run out of your time. And I think you raised a good question about at what point the school board as a whole is going to make decisions. And my understanding is, and I think this does need to be clear in the reg, which is that before the first month period, the Board has to vote.
There's nothing here.
No, I know.
There's nothing here.
I hear the question, my question was that we should add that. So, I don't, you know, I hear you, that's a concern.
But, what should be added is actually what happens. There's nothing here about what happens. It's just two people decide.
So, I'm trying to, because I was going to ask the same question anyway. Dr. Braybrand was, I mean, it's my assumption that we do not put the community through this unless the Board has already decided by a majority vote that we are going to change the name, and then the first 30, that's not what it says, that's right, and we need to fix that.
Well, okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, hold on. Let me, let me. One of the things I believe that Fairfax County needs to look at more is something called Occam's razor, which is a logical principle from like the 18th century, that simplicity is key. We overcomplicate simple things. I do believe, and I know where you're going, such action will be initiated by at least one Magisterial member representing students attending that facility and at one large. We probably should put some additional language in, if the Board wants it, to say, "A vote will be taken as to whether this request will be the action of the Board." A sentence in A to say, "You may initiate all you want, you still may not have the majority of the Board support the initiation of the renaming."
It's starting with the premise that we are changing the name. So, that's the inauthenticity of what this is.
Elizabeth, I'm sorry, but your time is over. You've asked a question, we'll give you a go-back.
So, the bottom line is, we can be as specific, we could add language in to say, and again, if you don't like the word "initiate," it can be brought to the Board for their review, and then the Board would need to, based on the review, take a vote to decide whether to rename, if you think that needs to be better spelled out. It could. But, that was our intention, that in A, the Board would, but, again, I'm just being out loud, I, as superintendent, am putting a reg that this is why it's better to have a conversation like this, that's obligating you to vote when it first comes forward. If you think that's the cleaner, clearer way, I'm certainly supportive of it. Lots of other folks have figured out how to do this and to do it in an expedited fashion without it taking a long time. We use language from other school districts. I didn't sit and make this language up, nor did Mr. Foster. But, I do think if you want specific language here in A that says, "Once it's brought to the Board by the Magisterial and one at-large for review, the Board will consider and take a vote to determine whether renaming would move forward." We could add that in, right, Mr. Foster, with no problem?
Okay, well, I'll bring that up when I talk too, so maybe we can talk about it a little more. Ms. Darrenat Kofax, Ms. Palczek, and then I'll take a turn.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Braybrand and staff, for getting this to us. As many people have stated, I was the individual who wanted to bring this forward. I think the most important part of this, as we talk about why you're bringing these changes, I'll just reread part of my forum topic. It says, "We must examine in a transparent and comprehensive way the reg criteria by which FCPS can name or rename schools appropriately. This discussion should have an intentional examination of schools that are named after Confederate soldiers or named after individuals with Confederate ties." So, that was the forum topic. And so, I think some of the other things that we're talking about here in renaming are a little bit different than the reason you made these changes. So, I guess what I, and I wanted to hear from my colleagues first, or I wanted to go last, so I could hear from my colleagues first. And what I'm hearing, there's some discomfort on some levels and some things, what can we work with? So, I'm hearing from you that we kept the changes the same as envisioning one Magisterial and one at-large. I think part of the reasoning for that perhaps is, is because the Magisterial is most closely aligned to that particular communities and schools, because that's where they live, that's who they, you know, that's who they represent. So, I guess we, as a Board, have to decide if we are comfortable with that. And, you know, did, and I realized, when I re-looked at my language, that it did say "policy," but I probably should have put "policy/reg," because I think you had looked at the policy, and at least at this point in time, felt as though a policy change wasn't necessary. And so, you felt you could help us, us help ourselves by simply making these modifications to the regs. So, that, I also, just trying to get quickly through my last minute here, and I will probably need to go back. Public comments, what would that look like? I do think we need a little bit of meat behind that. Public hearings, what else would that look like? I do think there's two places we need to coordinate in with staff in both A and B, and I can go over that. And, then the other thing, you know, we talked about the funds. I think that would be helpful to talk upfront, since we do have some historical data about how much it costs. If we are, if we agree to this, there are, and you broke them down into two categories, are we comfort, you know, well, this is going beyond, I'm just going to stop right there.
Ms. Dahlia Palczek, then I'll go, and then we'll start go-backs.
Sure, thank you. And just elaborating on some things that were mentioned. Number one, I agree with Ms. Kiskemara, and my concerns about which two members and how that's decided. I guess for me, it does make sense to have two who represent students at the school, but does it necessarily have to be a Magisterial and an at-large member? In addition, I know we currently have three at-large members, I don't know that that always has been and will be the case in statute, so maybe just saying two school board members, since we're all equal, who represent students at that school. So, I just wanted to throw that thought out there. And then, the other one would be, yes, I agree with, I think we need to better outline to Ms. Schultz and Ms. Darrenat Kofax's points, how it happens, how a decision, how those two members bring that decision to the Board, how the Board votes on it, and then how we go out to the public. So, just clarifying that. And as we talk about policy, I believe the only place in our policy where we even mention this is in Section 4, Guidelines for School Facilities, at the very end, there's just the one line that says that you may change the name of a school or a facility where some other compelling need exists. So, we probably, in that as policy, should look at that and figure out, A, the best placement for that, and then, B, how to improve upon that language, so that the regulation will follow, as Ms. Corbett Sanders was saying. And then finally, members of our community brought up a very good point, the question about school mascots or nicknames. So, if we could maybe think about where, how those would be addressed, if there also is a compelling need, not for a full school, but about the names or the mascots used for a school. So, beyond that, I think if you have a response to those, those would be great. And if not, you know, I also want to mention that while I appreciate and want to make sure, you know, we improve our process and not getting stuck on making, you know, perfect the enemy of the good here, my understanding is that there is one school whose compelling need has been very clear. And I appreciate, you know, Ms. Darrenat Kofax bringing this to us and leading the way in how we look at Lee High School. So, that was the first one that was brought up. There is one that came through this process that mentions an elementary school in my district, I'm happy to look at that. I also just want to make sure that does not slow down a process of something that I think for three years, you know, we've been wanting to address. So, just want to make sure we keep both of those in mind as well. Thank you.
One comment I'll make is, I believe it's correct, either it's a practice or is it in our regulation, that the choosing of the mascot resides with the school principal? I think that's in our reg. So, actually, in the case of justice, the school principal worked with students through the mascot process.
Just changing it also resides with the principal, is that clear in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And there have been other times in Fairfax County history that the school principal has changed the mascot, Fairfax High School being one of them. You know, I guess it's for the Board to decide, and I, your policy says compelling need. So, that was a big debate among all of you about defining what the compelling need is, and what are the elements of compelling need. Your forum question asked two questions. One, schools that are named after Confederate soldiers. You've changed the name of one school that was named after a Confederate soldier, and you asked me to bring you the others, and we have today. And then you asked about schools with Confederate ties, and we've brought you that today. So, I think as the Board tries to make decisions, it's, is compelling need different from a specific set criteria? Or, as part of compelling need, is it defining a criteria and making it the case throughout the system, regardless of what community input may or may not be? And I think those are questions best decided, frankly, and reviewed by the Board versus the superintendent.
Okay, thank you, I'll go. So, a couple of things. On the changing the name of the Rec Center, I always think we can learn from what the Board of Supervisors does, but I would say probably a Rec Center is a little bit different from a school, only because a school name brings up all the angst and, you know, that we had with Stewart changing it to Justice. You know, people get connected to a school name, I think maybe a little more than they get to a community center name. So, not a bad idea, but I think the- more than they get to a community center name. So not a bad idea, but I think the other school models, school system models, might be a little closer to what we need. Karen, your question about whether the magisterial district member, I think you're asking that as a matter of the statute or of like state code? Is that what, do you have a state code section that you're thinking about?
I was going to talk about it on my go back, but I'm happy to use your time if you want to.
Well, no, if you're going to anyway.
No, I have previously examined the code, and we have heard relentlessly from our legal scholar in chief that we are a Dillon State Rule. And it would be my argument that if the, with the Dillon Rule and the statute that authorizes school boards, I'm not sure that it's appropriate for a regulation to limit the roles between school board members, because that then relegates one with power or the other not. And I'm not sure, I don't think the statute is reflective of that. So I would, I think that what I was trying to get to before my time ran out was that there could be other combinations that recognize the structure of the statute. And so I think Dahlia came up with one of them. That is a possibility. But I don't think that the superintendent's language or the regs should give a differentiation that isn't supported by either the Dillon Rule or the statute.
So we need that, we need that information from council, I think is where we are, before we make that decision. Okay, all right. So I wanted to mention that, I mean, this is spare, right? There's not a lot here. And what I assume we do with something like that is that we just fill in with our strategic governance and with the law and with our protocol and just sort of how we normally do business. So that's why I sort of assumed, but I do think it needs to be clear. In B, when it says, "Public notice of the school board's intent to rename a school will be made in a public session of the board," I think that means that we have our usual process of we sit down, something is brought to us, is this sort of like a type of forum, right? But it's brought by, as it stands now, two school board members. And that comes to the board as new business, and then there are two weeks, and then we vote on it. And that basically says, we let the community know we have the intent to rename a school, right? And that is when the naming suggestions period, the 30 days at least, begins. And I think, I would like that clarity, because one thing I remember from the justice time was that we were kind of flying that plane as we were building it, as we flew it. And we found that the community was unclear about whether we were going to change the name, or we were asking them whether we wanted to change the name. They wanted an option to be no change, right? And then we decided sort of in the midst of all that, that no, 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 no change is not an option. We voted to change the name. So I think we need to be clear about that. If we're going out to the community, we've already decided we want a different name. We can change our mind about that, but we're not asking the community, should we change the name? We want to know suggestions. So I think it's important to have that in there, that we've already decided to vote it, to change it. And I guess that's all I had for now. Okay, for go backs, we have Karen Kies-Gamara.
Thank you. So I want to start with the compelling need and the policy. I do think we need to clarify the policy. By having that language in there without a definition, we have opened ourselves up to relentless and unnecessary, in my opinion, litigation. And for that reason, I think that it is the prerogative of the board to examine names. It is assumed that school board members represent the folks that have elected them. And so my vote would be to remove that word compelling from our policy. I think it would also be helpful to have Ms. Darrenat Kofax's forum topic in front of us, because that really is what we're talking about. And when I went back to try to pull it out, it's not posted.
It's been sent out.
It's been sent out. Okay. All right. So, all right, my time's still going. Okay. So my first thing is, is that I think we do need to change the policy. Second, Pat, thank you. I wanted to follow up because I assumed that by two people bringing forth the desire to change a name, I assumed that that would be treated like a forum topic. We would bring it to the board. We would then make a decision. So I wasn't assuming that there was anything covert or not transparent. And so I wanted to state that. Now, with respect to page eight, we talked about, it talks about the school board member will coordinate this process. I have no idea what that means, because I don't have the staff and we, you know, I just don't know how that works. And so as a next step, and I think Brian mentioned a little bit of this, we need to know what that means and, you know, how we're going to go to the community, you know, how we're going to solicit their input. And I also think we need to clarify that when we go to the community, it is sometimes not understood that every voice from the community may not be at that meeting. And so as elected officials, even though we seek, and perhaps people feel as though they made a vote, I don't think, as with the justice situation, that that is determinative. We are still elected officials, and we have been, we have, we are in this seat to represent the community. And so we are not, while we seek guidance from the community, we have to come together and make a decision. And so I want it very clear in any policy and in any reg, that when we hold these meetings and we get feedback, it is, it does not supersede our role as an elected official. So we need to clarify the authority of the board and the mascot. I think you said that is something that the principal decides. The principal has to be guided by rule, the overall policy of this board. And so if a principal says they want to put a rebel as their mascot, that is not okay. Not when this board has decided that the, that folks that are connected to the Confederacy cannot represent this board. So while I completely respect our principles, I think this board has to clarify what is acceptable in our schools and what can represent our schools.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brabran. I'm sorry, you don't have to respond to that. Next, Karen Corbett Sanders, Sandy, and Megan.
Thank you. And I'm glad I'm following Ms. Kies-Gamara, because I'm going back to the policy statement and the term compelling need, and also the very elegant language that Ms. Darrenat Kofax included in her forum topic. And what I would advocate for is that we take that language out of the forum topic and put it into our policy as part of our compelling need. So it could read something like compelling need to ensure an inclusive, respectful learning environment for all of our students and staff, and in recognition that the values associated with Confederate soldiers or Confederate values do not align with our community today. Putting it in the policy, because the policy drives everything we do. And the challenge that we faced a few years ago was that the compelling need was never defined. And so we never, as a board, said, "We are concerned that our students and staff are negatively impacted by going into a building named after somebody who believed in enslaving their forefathers." And so that's the crux of what we're dealing with here, is defining what we stand for. And then based on that, it is up to, in the implementing reg, it is up to the individual board members to say, "It's time to turn the clock. It's time to go ahead and address this building. It's time to address the next building." And so one is, what's our policy? The other is, how do we get there?
Thank you. Ms. Evans, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Schultz.
So I just wanted to make a couple of points here. One is about the history of the Justice High School name change. We talk about new schools versus renaming, and that's one of the important differences, is that when we have a new school, we know we have to name it. And so we therefore start the process. With a renaming, the first thing we have to do is decide that this board believes we need to rename. And that is, in fact, what took two years. That's what took two years, was this board deciding that, yes, we need to change the name. That happened in July of 2017, that we made that decision as a board. Once we'd made that decision, then it took us about three months to come up with the name and change the name, and then another 10 months to implement. That's where we get to the, to the three years. So, and yes, the process for determining the name was a little messy, you know, we need to clean that up. But I didn't want it to be lost on what actually took the time. I agree with, I was going to make the same point about the compelling need, although I'll look at it a little bit differently. I think the language that you have here is the board may rename, and we did have a problem with it. How do you define compelling need? You know, what does that mean? I think we could simply change it to saying that the, we added that as part of the name change process. We realized that we didn't have a policy about renaming. So that was added in as part of that two-year process. So it may be simpler just to say that the board can rename a school when it deems it appropriate to rename the school. It doesn't have to be for one, for this specific reason. We may have other reasons in the future. So we might, I think we can make that simpler by saying, when the board deems it appropriate, we may want to have some kind of a principle, principle meaning a statement of values that says, if we're going to name after a, after an individual, how do we determine that that's an appropriate individual? We may want to make a statement to that point, which would get at the issue of naming after someone in the Confederacy. I also, again, think that we do need to, whatever we do, the process needs to be parallel. The weighted vote, I think sometimes it gets very confused. I've been through three processes, the Mason Crest naming, the Bailey's Upper Elementary School renaming, and then the Justice High School naming. The first two were, well, certainly Mason Crest was a lot simpler, but not very many people came out to that meeting. And we came up with the name Mason Crest, and it was, the community liked it. But I do think that we need to be more specific in here. I hear what Ms. Schultz is saying, but I do think it just needs to be clarified. What happened with the justice name change, myself and Mr. McAlveen initiated it. That didn't mean that we were the ones making the decision. We initiated it at a forum topic as a forum item. And we just need to clarify that whoever can initiate it, they initiate it, but then the board has to approve, affirmatively approve that we agree that any, that a school name needs to be changed. And then we probably need to put a little bit more detail in here about how you're going to collect, how you're going to collect community input, and is it going to be weighed, or is it just going to be, the board is just going to say, you know, we're going to, you know, weigh it ourselves. Are we going to have hearings? Are we going to have, I mean, hearings might be a good idea, but I do think we need a little bit more detail.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Schultz, and Ms. Darrenat Kofax.
Thank you. First of all, I haven't heard us talk about the other school that's been identified, Mosby Woods Elementary. And so on page two of the history, in talking about each of the schools and their names, under name origin, in the second sentence, it said, "In keeping with the policy, Mosby Woods Elementary School was named for the Mosby Woods Residential Housing subdivision." So, I mean, I do think that's something that we have to be thinking about, because Jeb Stewart and Robert E. Lee, those are clearly named after an individual. Mosby Woods, in my mind, now you start going down the, how many other schools do we have named after areas within Fairfax County that have Confederate ties? But John's, what's his full name here?
John Singleton.
John Singleton Mosby, that's not the name of the elementary school. So, I mean, I understand it's named after the subdivision, and so it's understood. My focus right now is that we're wanting to make sure that we don't have buildings with Confederate soldiers' names on them. And so we do have some other schools with those ties to it. So regardless, the other issue that we've got here is, you know, Ms. Hines, you were talking about what we could learn from the Board of Supervisors or not. And you're very correct that communities and families end up having connections to school names and all of that. What I'm trying to, hopefully, what we could learn from is, the longer we take with this, if this board believes after the renaming for Justice High School, that it is in the community's best interest to not have schools named after an individual, or their name is right on the building, then the sooner we can make that change, the better. And I feel like the supervisors have showed us how to do that quickly and not protractedly. And then the other thing is, I emailed to all of you, the follow-on motion that was from Mr. Wilson, and I'm going to ask this question to Dr. Brabran. His follow-on motion that I sent to everybody from October 26th, it said that prior to any future school renaming, the superintendent would review the provisions of Regulation 8170 and the processes followed with respect to the renaming, to identify potential areas of improvement, and to provide a report to the board with recommendations no later than that, January 2018, and that the Governance Committee would then also review Policy 8170 as soon as possible in coordination with this review that was done by the superintendent. I don't recall that that got done. So kind of what we're doing now, just so everybody checks the date, that was supposed to happen by January 2018. We're now at July 2019. So a year and a half went by, and we didn't do what this board unanimously passed. And so I would ask as a next step, Dr. Brabran, that, you know, again, we revisit the language and find out why that didn't happen, because I think it can complement the work you're doing here. And I'm just going to leave it with everybody. The sooner we do, what I believe this board has already on record said, which is in 2019, it's not appropriate to have a Confederate soldier's name on a building, then let's get there sooner rather than later, and engage with the community on, you know, how they want us to proceed with that. But this board doesn't need the community to tell us what we have already, I've heard virtually everybody say, we don't need that name on the building. So what are we, sooner the better.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Schultz, Ms. Darrenat Kofax, and Mr. Wilson.
So I hear the sooner the better, but I'm right back to what has been presented to us. The way it's been presented to us has no explanation. The entire problem that we have found ourselves in is setting expectations with the community for, to be transparent and accountable for what is the process upfront, what is the process you're going to follow, and did you do the process that you told us, and did you follow it? And there is no process in there. It is two people on the board choosing for themselves without, without the community driving the conversation. These are individual board members who, on their own, have no authority. And where is the work to engage, this is the problem. We have not engaged the community. And so if you want to impose, if something wants to be initiated at the board level, and it wants to be imposed on the public, and the public has 30 days to respond, but it doesn't matter, because we've already voted that we're going to do it, then that's, that's the definition of an inauthentic process. So I'm just saying, if the attempt is to fix what happened last time and not have a broken process that keeps getting re-broken, and the goalposts keep moving, then you have to define it now. If we don't define it now, then all of this effort right now also will be deemed to have been inauthentic, because it will be deemed, it didn't matter what the, whether it was a regulation, or a policy, or a practice, or whatever, they got to whatever they wanted to, however they wanted to, and they moved as many goalposts again in order to get there. And so I just urge my colleagues to not enter into the fray again of setting, setting unclear expectations, not following them, and then being accused of not following a process that you weren't fair with the community in the first place. The community should be driving this conversation, not individual board members.
Okay. Ms. Darrenat Kofax, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Moon, and Ms. Strauss.
All right. I'm going to go from very
All right, I'm going to go from very specificity to bigger picture, because I think, so, for the two, the two things, Dr. Brabran, when you talk about in the regs, under B, and you talk about, we do need to talk about, you know, will be made in a public hearing, we are going to need staff, we need to define what the period of public engagement to the community will be, we need to define that. And then, I think, we have to decide if one month is enough, I mean, I don't think we want to go much beyond that, but I think we have to do that. And then, I think another colleague mentioned in C, the school board member will coordinate. It has to be with staff, I mean, it's basically going to be an analysis of whatever, if it's a public hearing or other means, the way the public can communicate to us are our thoughts. Regarding Ms. Schultz, I hear what you're saying, but at the same time, anything this board brings forward, you know, board members bring it forward, two board members would bring it forward, as Ms. Hines had talked about, to the entire board, and then we would go through our process and do it. So, I think that eliminates your concern, at least in my head, because it's following our process of most everything that we do. And I guess, I know Ms. Hines and Ms. Palchik.
Be clear, that's not what it says, though.
You, well, I said there has to be some, I talked about that, some modifications to the language here. And I think what we have to do, oh, and one more thing, I think we do have to decide, we're a little bit stuck on the regs now, but I think we have to decide, if we are going to move forward, if we're going to go, move forward with both of these name changes at the same time, I would almost like us as a board to kind, to come to consensus with that, to say that Lee and Mosby Woods would be looked at. But I don't know if we'll be able to do that, but I think those are the two named after Confederate soldiers, and if we were going to do that, I think, I would like to kind of go forward together in that process. Regarding where we go from here today, it almost sounds like we need another works, another work session, I mean, that's what I'm kind of hearing, but you're shaking your head. I, I'm saying that's what I'm hearing, I, you know, I think we all need to speak up about where we need to go from here, because we're a little muddy right now. And I know the whole idea is to move, at least it was my idea, to get the process in a place where we could all agree to it, and then move forward, as was defined in my, you know, because we felt that Confederate names were no longer appropriate for here in Fairfax. So, we need to figure out, in the next little bit, what we're, if we need another work session, how we're going to do this, and.
No, I agree. I mean, so, I'll have a go back as well, and we need to recognize and honor the desire of the community to move faster than meeting after meeting after meeting, especially since it's July, you know? So, we'll see what we can do. Mr. Wilson, Mr. Moon, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. So, during the long, seemingly interminable process of renaming Jeb Stuart High School as to Justice High School, on a number of occasions, I found myself fighting for a process that was, that dealt with what the board, in their own, you know, our own discussions had agreed upon. One of them was the process set forth in the regulation for how we would go about and get community engagement, right? And whether we were following that, and we had numerous efforts to try to gauge the interests of the community in making a name change, and we did it over and over, and it seemed to be, the community opinion was opposed to changing the name. Another issue that we talked about many times was the cost, right? The cost of implementing a name change. And then, the other piece of it, which I think we've sort of talked about a little bit today, is the importance of the decision to change the name of a school. And in particular, to change the name of a school named after a Confederate soldier in Virginia that had ties to this area. And in that, in that, in that question, I think drove us to continue down this, what was a pretty rocky path of engaging a community and trying to find that community support. Those are the same things that I think we have to deal with now in this decision. I don't think that the proposed language does any of those things, and in fact, it doesn't, it goes, it's much broader than even the forum topic. I mean, you could, it would pick up any school, right? It just, the board decides. So, I do think that the changes to the regulation don't reflect what our follow-on motion requested by any stretch of the imagination. However, I think that it is worth a further work session to discuss the final piece of this, which is, you know, and I think the phrase is, the fierce urgency of now, is it great enough to push this through now when we have other budget discussions? We talked about putting $600,000 to add some support staff for us as school board members. So, there's money that is available, and I think that this cost issue, to me, maybe isn't as relevant as it was. And I think we ought to face down this issue, have these discussions, and make the decision. And I don't, I don't know that we've done a whole lot to advance the ball with these changes to the regulation, that's why I was a bit critical of the changes that were made, and of the process that we went through last time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Strauss.
I'm going to lay down my marker on this. I think this board has spent a lot of time looking at naming cha, name.
Name policy.
Name policy, naming policy, or renaming policy, while school name changes, I think this board has to complete its job. There's an elephant in this room, which is a Robert E. Lee High School. That's what, on everybody's mind, that's what on the people's mind, whether we should change the name or not, this board owes it to the community to make a decision before, before its term expires at the end of December. Looking at the second meeting in December as the deadline, we need to work backward and to see what the timeline should be. I think we've talked a lot, you know, what you have on the table right now may be, may not be 100% solution, as to the, a perfect, perfect regulations and perfect policies you are seeking. So, I am willing to task, I am willing to ask my board members to task Governance Committee, which meets on July 24th, and I have just conferred with the Governance Committee Chair whether Governance Committee, you know, might be willing to take on, on this task, and if they can come back, come back with a cleaner recommendations for the board's adoption. Boards, obviously, boards have to go through its, a normal governance procedure, about putting it up as a due business, due business, and then voting on. If we can do that, if we can do that, I think this board, this board can complete, complete its work before its term is over. Yeah, yeah, term is over, you know, before the end of December. And that is, that is my urging to my board members, that we complete our work before our term expires.
So, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Palchik, and then I will take a go back.
Okay, I went back, and I was looking at the policy. I agree that the responsibility of the school board, which is paragraph three, I think probably needs no changes. I do believe that under Guidelines for School Facilities, which is item four, that.
I'm sorry, what are you looking at?
This is the policy.
Okay.
Right, right. As I'm listening to everybody's discussion, I think that we should consider adding the language that I think was partly in Ms. Darnett Kofax's forum topic, that talks about, you know, honoring current people, you know, basically what we went through when we did justice. There was some very nice language there, I'm not a wordsmith, but there was very nice language, because our intent is, things need to be named to honor and inspire students of today. And I think, under that, item four, under Guidelines, I think that would fit there. And if we, and then if we want to go on to say, for example, schools named, specifically named after Confederate soldiers, if we want to put that in there, that's where that would go. Under the language, or it says, the school board may also consider a change in the name of a school or facility where some other compelling need exists, I think we may be able to take that language out, that was difficult for us with justice, as to a compelling need. I think when we, within Guidelines for School Facilities, the compelling need becomes naming a school or renaming a school to inspire students of today. I think that might take care of that.
Respect.
Exactly, exactly. So that that takes that bump in the road out. My only question on the, on the regulation, I'm all for making that short and sweet, acknowledging that we need staff on that, that the school board needs an affirmative vote to go forward that we are going to rename. Going back to the policy, the responsibility of the school board, it already has in there where it says, "In fulfilling this responsibility, the school board shall make every effort to respect the preference of the community, however the final decision is the school board's." I don't want to go back with waiting, with, that just, that just bogs us down. So, those are my two recommendations, and I do think, at the very least, the school board needs to fix the policy and the reg, and if the marker that Mr. Moon has laid down, I think that needs further discussion, but I sure think, in short order, we need to fix the policy and the reg, and then see where we go. I also think it's very important that when turf fields are put down, that the school name not be in the turf. And I understand the new field at Lee does not have its name in it. So, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. Ms. Palchik.
Yeah, no, briefly enough, apologies I had to step out a little while ago, but I support what Mr. Moon had mentioned, that's where I was going, and Ms. Strauss, I, the original forum topic did say that the Governance Committee would look at the policy. So, if Ms. Evans says that there's time for that, it didn't, something I read said policy with govern, oh, or the follow-on motion. Something I just read.
If the board would like Governance to take it on, we'll find, we'll find.
The unanimous follow-on motion says that I further move that the board direct the Governance Committee to review Policy 8170 as soon as possible in coordination with the review to be completed by the superintendent.
Yeah, the review that he was ordered to do.
Anyway.
The forum directed.
Okay. Okay. Okay, anyway.
Because we didn't want to get bogged down.
Okay. Well, I feel like we've come really close in the regulations, just a little bit of tweaking, if the policy, but a little bit of tweaking, to me, if Ms. Evans says Governance can look at it, and we can get it back very soon this fall, I would support that. I also want to make it very clear that, just as other things we decide, and I hear you, Mr. Wilson, and I think I understood where we landed, where you landed in the end, but just as other things, we are elected officials, are not decided by, you know, public input on every decision we make. I do think that this is something, we are the elected officials, there needs to be public engagement and communication and transparency and a very clear process, but it needs to be a decision of the school board, and that needs to happen, I believe, especially in this case, in a very expedient manner, because it has been approximately three years. So, I would support that, and whatever timeline we end up deciding sometime around late December works for me, and I hope we can figure out how to get there. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Just two quick things. Obviously, if we're directed to do so, I've worked with Governance Committee before on other matters, if I'm asked to work with the Governance Committee on your policy and my regulation proposed, I'm certainly willing to do that. I do want to clarify, there was a prior work session with the follow-on motion to bring back an update to you by January. I brought to board leadership that information. At the time, we had a legal case before the board, which, under board leadership direction, I stood down doing that work, and about the time that case ended was the forum topic that Ms. Darnett Kofax brought forward. So, I don't want you to believe that I did not engage board members again, and that the reason for the delay had been a court case at that time that was resolved, so, just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. So, I'll do, go back, I'm going to push back a little bit, Mr. Moon, and everybody, I think we do need to make some changes in this regulation, or suggest some to the superintendent anyway, to, just because there are some places that I think are unclear enough, that we owe it to the community to know what's coming. But on the policy, I'll be honest with you, I don't hear any suggested changes that matter. The policy is fine the way it is. The changes might make it better, but we don't need to make those changes to move forward. We can move forward with the language and the policy that we have. I think we could have someone, as soon as the regulation is cleaner, and we could do that, make suggestions today, get that out, you know, as soon as staff is able to. I don't think, I worry a lot about sending this back to Governance, you know, and for one thing, Ms. Evans is not going to be the Governance Chair in two weeks anymore, we're going to, oh, okay, well, whatever, but that's good then, but still, we know what happens to things that go to Governance, right? I mean, the, no, no, I'm sorry. I was assuming that we would have a new Governance Chair, I don't, I don't know anything, but anyway, I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but that is often what happens in July, is that we end up with a new chair, so that's all I was saying. I just, you know what happens when things go to Governance, you know, it's, that would be a good thing to do, make it better, but we, to me, we don't need to make any of the suggested changes to move forward, and the community has been waiting a long time for us to move forward, in particular, on one of these schools, and I worry about sending the message to the community that we're more concerned about making our policy language prettier than we are about actually moving forward and making a change. So, that's my two cents. We have third go-backs, Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Keesgamar.
I wanted to go back because Mr. Moon was talking about this proposal, that how quickly can we do this? And I do agree with Mr. Moon at minimum, that we cannot afford to push this on to the next board. So, I like the idea that, and Ms. Hines, to your point, if we, if the policy itself, we feel comfortable, I do agree, based on many conversations I had over the last two years when the board deliberated this, if compelling need is going to stay in there, then just like Mr. Wilson had instructed the superintendent, which thank you, Dr. Brabran, for reminding us, that we did have the court case, and that's why it put the work on hold, it doesn't change the result, though, that even though we had Ms. Darnett Kofax's forum, we still have an outstanding forum that went beyond her forum topic, and I'm going to reiterate my request that we honor the board's direction, which is, the only way you prevent yourselves from making mistakes is to do a postmortem on what happened before. And I think there are some things that we can do to, and Ms. Hines, I think you've been talking about this a little bit, we want the community be with us, and to feel we are working together with them. So, I still think the look back is there. I'm definitely not supportive of this going to be a rush deliberation by Governance at the 24th meeting. Number one, I'm not going to be there, I'm going to be traveling, and that leaves three out of the Governance, three Governance Committee members to, you know, suddenly do a crash review next week on that. So, but I do think that we could get something done, and before the board, in the month of September, if people feel that, what are we doing to just follow our policy, and it really, it's about the regulation. And finally, Mr. McAlveen, I want to thank you for pointing out, as others have, we have to make this regulation more clear about where the staff role is this, just in terms of doing the work, because as we have spoken to many times today, we don't have the bandwidth in our school board office to do this kind of work, and this is the operational piece. So, we give direction, and operationally, you all. So we give direction, and operationally, you all would help us execute in the community engagement piece. So I never envisioned this would just be the entire, you know, 400-plus people in gatehouse will sit on the sidelines and watch us just execute on this. I think it's just a matter of making sure, though, that the language is a little more clear there.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Kiesgumara, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Okay. So I think we're actually talking about a couple of different things here. There's the issue of having a policy that helps us to move forward. And then there's the issue of looking at the names that the staff has researched and the historical background and whether that falls within the concerned identified in the forum topic, which says we, that Confederate names do not properly represent us, and therefore, we need to change these names. What we can do most immediately is make a decision on Robert E. Lee and Mosby Woods. And that is separate and apart from changing any language in the policy itself. I do believe that the policy needs to be changed, but that should not hold up the other part, which is with respect to Robert E. Lee and Mosby Woods. So that is something that we need to decide as a body. I am certainly for changing these names. It's pretty simple. And then with respect to policy, the word, as far as I'm concerned, compelling needs to come out of there because we live in Fairfax County, and we should not use language that simply invites, that is, that isn't defined and invites litigation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Evans and Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yeah, just on whether we should, governance should take it on. I, I think what we're talking about from the conversation, I think, famous last words here, but I think we're talking about two sentences. We're changing, you know, to, to change compelling need and to talk about what our principles are. I mean, I realize two sentences can take a long time. But I guess along the same lines, I think this is what you were saying, Ms. Kiesgumara, is that if we were reviewing, if, if governance, whoever the governance committee is in the coming year, if governance were going to review the language of the policy, there's nothing that would need to hold up what we were doing in terms of a specific school. The regs, I think it's clear, we need more specificity, and those need to be revised according to this conversation. But I think that could be on a parallel track. So I would, I would hope that, the regs, though, would fit both the current language, really, the, the language that's in the current policy and, and improved language if the governance committee took a couple of meetings and, and, and then that would not, what I'm saying is that would not have to hold up either the regs or action under the regs, to my mind.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders, anybody else want to go back? Let us know.
I'm glad to follow Ms. Evans because that's exactly what I was going to suggest, is that we can, we're able to do more than one thing at a time, and that having a parallel process that addresses the concerns of the policy, which is really just some slight nuances that, that shouldn't take too much time, and at the same time, having the superintendent re, making some adjustments to the regulation. And if we can get both of those done while at the same time, you know, knowing that, that there is a general support for the approach we're taking, then we shouldn't be doing this in perpetuity. This should be something that should be very expedient.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. Wilson, and Ms. Palchuk.
So Dr. Braybrand, when do you think, do you, do you have questions about what we're talking about as far as changes to the regs?
I don't. And I think I could take the focus on, as far as the regulation, and bring changes back to the board in the next week to 10 days, I believe, before, say, the July 25th school board meeting, if there were a forum. I mean, you guys have to decide how and what framework, but I, I could get it done in a one to two weeks, I believe, the regulation clarity.
All right. And so I still think we have to decide then, because I'm just trying to think this out. If this board wants to take ownership of this issue, it has to be done before September comes. So then, and you have to very specifically think about what the public engagement would look like, and, you know, get back to us, and we have to approve that, and we have a little bit of an August recess. I'm just trying to really think this through. And I, well, I appreciate Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Evans, you're talking about a parallel process, but then that's still, I don't know if any change, like, the policy requires, it's really the reg issue, the, the process, I think, that needs to be further defined so we can then move forward. Because the policy issue, I, I just worry about all of this going through because then the whole board has to do everything. I think if we can come to agreement on changes in the regs very specific in the next two weeks, after you're saying that, then things could move forward in the fall after our mini-break in August.
I'm sharing, it's for the board to determine when, right? But all I'm saying is, I think by the 25th, I could have a revised reg for you to give me feedback. Again, the regulation is the superintendent's.
Right.
If there's a consensus on that the feedback that you all shared today is within that reg, we could move forward with that regulation.
Okay.
And any decisions that the board would make in September.
That would be my advocacy.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson and Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. So, Dr. Braybrand, in that process of looking at the regs again, I mean, I guess one thing I'd like you to clarify, it, of the, basically, the entire section dealing with getting the community engagement has been deleted. Are you, are you planning to go back now and, and relook at those and to think about the process of engagement to the community to get a sense of the community?
Yes, that's what I heard from the board. We need to be specific and delineate it out. And we debated whether to get that detailed and then decided, well, maybe that's too much detail. Now, I got the feedback, a little bit more of that detail, to be clear. We'll have, we'll set baselines. Again, I'm, I'd like to go back with staff, but there'll be minimum specifically elucidated amounts of public engagement instead of just having this, and again, whether it's numbers or whether it's both at Luther Jackson or in the community, I want to spend time with staff. But we would, we would specifically explain in more descriptive language how the public engagement, what it would consist of, what it would look like. That would be in the regulation, based on the feedback I heard from board members today, greater specificity about what that engagement looks like.
Okay. Because I think that, you know, particularly, maybe Lee High School, the community there, I think, you know, there's, it's quite a disruption to a community to change the name of that high school. And I think that's, this, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't, I totally agree with Ms. Palchuk in saying that ultimately, this is our decision. But I also think that, you know, we do need to honor the families and the community that is affected by any name change. And I think therein lied the problem with, with the process we went through, which is the community, a significant portion of the community, whether or not, how much of the community, but a significant portion felt that they weren't being heard. And, and, you know, and, and ultimately, it is our decision, but I think that, that engagement portion of the regulation is, is critical. So I, I think we ought to keep something in there that maybe isn't exactly the same, but accomplishes the same sort of intent.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palchuk?
Thank you. And I guess following up a little bit on what Tammy was saying, I wanted to figure out, there, there are now three different points. There's the policy, the regs, and right now, most importantly, when, how are we bringing forward a vote, an action item? And I guess I'm still not 100% clear. It sounds like we're planning to do this in September, hopefully, but it has to be aligned. We'll talk with whatever regulation and policy, or, well, especially regulation are being tweaked. So I guess I just want to make sure we have clarity on that.
So I, maybe to help, in my view, again, let's be transparent, a regulation doesn't require board action or a board vote. I would bring you our revised work, and maybe during a forum time on the 25th, I could get, again, you guys explore with me the manner in which you want or how you want to do it, to give feedback to me on whether that regulation has the specificity that you're looking for. But again, the, the board can determine the time and place. In one to two weeks, I can bring you an updated regulation. The rest of, under the manner in which it would be done is for the board to decide.
Okay.
In my view.
Did you want to add something, Tammy?
Yeah. If you, so two weeks from now is, when is the next work session that we have in the evening?
The 22nd.
22nd.
22nd. So the board meeting, okay, so, so, all right.
It, it's possible, but I, I don't want to sit here right now and go, I'm 100% sure I could bring it. I could try, if the board wants me to try. I could try to bring it on the 22nd, but I, I just don't know.
Better than bringing it at the, because of the structure.
I could try to bring it on the 22nd if the board wishes.
Can I offer a suggestion that we discuss this at chairs and try to come back to the whole board with a date specific, that you'll provide revisions to the regulation and a time to speak about it? Because I know both the 22nd, we have filled that agenda pretty tightly, based on some of the discussions we had earlier today, and similarly on the 25th. So let's talk on Wednesday about how we can address the timing of it.
Okay, that's fine. And then finally, I just want to add that I think part of the issue, and I think we're doing a good job in addressing it here, is that these schools and the names of these schools belong not just to a group of families, but to the whole county. And so when information, when input is taken and engagement, and preferably in a manner that, you know, I think we learned some lessons from what creates a more, you know, constructive versus destructive process, that we take that into account and that we make sure that all members and not just, that a small selection has that ability. So, but look forward to figuring out timing and figuring out how to move forward. Thank you.
Yeah. So, Mr. Moon, go ahead.
I guess, another marker, you know, I'm, I'm being a little stubborn about this. Again, you know, working backward, second meeting in December, that's the last time our, this board will gather together to make any decision. Working backward, you know, we need to work on this rather quickly to be able to accomplish what this board owes to the community. We have, we have current regulations which are in effect until, until we change the regulations that govern our process. If there is a magistrate district board member who, and also another, a large board member who are willing to initiate, initiate a name change of a particular school, in this case, of Robert E. Lee, they can bring that forward to our forum, make a, make a request for the July 25th forum meeting, forum discussion. And, and as, as to the policy wise, I agree with, you know, Karen Kiesgumara, that, that compelling, we may not want to keep the language compelling in the policy. And if he, if the board wants to change that, has to follow the regular board's governance practice, process, which is putting it, and whether, whether you want to do it as a concern agenda, or you want to do, you know, new business and then vote actually as a business in September, but that has to be done. My timeline is basically this, give this to governance committee, governance committee to work on on July 24th. And we have a governance committee chair who is willing to take on, on this one, and then, and then, and then post that as even, as early as July 25th, or, or the first meeting in September. And then if the board wants to have a further discussion, we have innovating, we have a work session on, on September 16th, and then could vote on the whole change on, on September 20, 26. Meanwhile, two board members could continue working on initiating and bring it to the board for an action in tandem with a review and, and, and action on potential change to the regulation and policy that can be done, while keeping in mind that we want to get this thing done by the end of December.
Okay, thank you. Well, maybe I'll close it up then. I, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Moon, but the end of December scares me. Even talking about this as the end of December is when we're going to make this decision, because you know what we do, right? We, we set that as the goal, and it happens in April, right? So I, but I agree with everything else you said. I think that two board members could bring this school before us, you know, anytime, anytime now. We don't need to change the policy in order to get these particular two school names or one of them moving. And we don't vote on the regulation. We have asked the superintendent to take our comments and bring us back a regulation that is clearer, that, that we agree is clearer and better for the community. But we don't have to wait for that necessarily to start, and we don't vote on it. And the superintendent has said he's willing to turn that around in a week. So I don't see any reason for us to be shooting for December. I think we should be shooting for September, for, for the board to start having this as a new business and get it out in the public, get our, get plenty of public input, because we'll have new business, and two weeks later, we'll vote on it. If we want to push that off, you know, give the public four weeks, which we sometimes do that, right? New business and then four weeks for the public to comment. But I, you know, I think we owe it to ourselves to shoot for September rather than December. So all of that said.
Besides, December is not the starting time.
I know.
We keep that as ending time. That's our deadline. So work backward and think about when we need to start. If it required two months of public, public engagement, we know when we have to start.
I got you. So finish the whole process by December. I got you, okay. It's just, it's the procrastinator in me who looks at that way of thinking of it and says, oh, no, 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 we need to start way earlier. So do we have, so I think we have a next step and to ask the superintendent to make some clarifying changes in the reg, and you've offered to do that for us, right? Are there any other, oh, and another next step is to send the policy to governance to try to work on it with those suggestions at the July meeting? If, if the board, do, show of hands to go ahead, start improving the policy in the ways that we've, that we've discussed? Okay. No, just to send it to them, and then they bring it back to us. They're not going to change the policy without bringing it to us, but it's just to get them working on it. Any other, yeah, any other next steps?
Are you gonna?
Yeah. Can we put them up? Is it, do we have? Thank you. Uh huh, there we go. Okay, as usual. I was, I was, I was trying to, yeah, I was trying to make this faster. Look at other combinations to initiate the name change action other than one magistrate. Okay. So Ms. Kiesgumara, you have that legal question, and we do need to get it considered.
Right. Should be clarified in that statement that we need guidance from counsel regarding the Dillon Rule slash the statute authorizing school boards with respect to how school board members are given assignments.
Right. So we presumably will get that, that legal advice from Mr. Foster as soon as you're ready to give it to us. And then that doesn't really slow us down either.
No, it doesn't.
But we might want to change the reg when we find that out, right?
Right. And, yes.
Okay.
And does, I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at the policy. Does the policy also say one?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So number two, locate and share with the school board any superintendent memoranda to the board from the late 1950s and early 1960s. Okay, Mr. McElveen, is that what you want? Okay. Number three, determine if any members of the school board leadership team involved in the renaming process are alive and willing to share their regulations. Okay. Mr. McElveen, I hope you're going to do a Google search and help us out with that, but that's, is that what you wanted? Okay. Include in the regulations some language about staff helping to execute a name change. Yes, I think we talked about that, just a little more, a little more detail. Right, okay. Five, what did board supervisors undertake? So getting the board supervisor's experience, right? Can staff?
Yeah, I, I want to just clarify, since that was mine. It wasn't that I want to do, know what they did undertake in adoption of a name change policy. It's just, what did the board supervisors do to execute the renaming of the Lee District Rec Center?
Okay.
It was the Park Authority Board. That, that board didn't make any.
The Park Authority Board?
Yeah.
Well, the, okay, the way it was explained to me is the board supervisors still had to play a role in renaming the Rec Center.
to play a role in renaming the rec center. You're saying they did nothing?
No, they didn't. They handed it to the rec center.
Park Authority Board.
Well, it sounds like we need some details on that.
I think we need some details on that, because, I mean, I talked to, I talked to one of the board supervisors who made it sound like it was definitely their leadership guidance or whatever, so if it wasn't, then I want to, I want to understand what they did for renaming that district.
Yeah, let's get some clarity. Number six, provide more detail regarding public comment, public, I think that superintendent has already said he'll put more, more detail in the reg about that. Recognizing that some flexibility is also what you were going for, I think, but more clarity.
Hang on one second.
Yeah.
We're rewriting the number four to include the governance committee, doing something with the regulation. The regulation would be the superintendent.
Superintendent?
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, five is fine, six is fine, right, Tammy? Seven, either define compelling or delete the phrase. Okay, so that's part of our policy review, right?
And can I, can I add to that? And my suggestion is under Roman numeral four in the policy, under guidelines for school facilities, that that one or two sentences that actually come off of what Karen Corbett Sanders has a nine, but don't say compelling need, it is just to ensure an inclusive, respectful learning environment, you know, inspiring students. Consider, yeah, and I think that part of the language is also in, in, in Tammy's forum topic, forum topic, right, it's, it's there. It's like two sentences under Roman numeral four in the policy, and that's for government.
Okay, so Ms. Corbett Sanders, if Ms. Strauss adds that to seven, do we do away with nine?
Then we can get rid of nine, because we've already added it to seven. The idea was to.
Gotcha.
To leverage the great work out of that form.
Yes. And, and Ms. Evans, as a great wordsmith, will do it in two sentences.
Right. And Pat, since we're doing that, superintendent, can we have for governance committee to, for number seven, governance committee will, some language about, that's governance committee, it's not a staff next step.
And I guess that's both Evans and Corbett Sanders on that now.
Okay. On number seven. So number eight, clarify the authority of the board in item C, school board members will coordinate the, yeah, just make that clear, what do you mean by that? Coordinate, okay, thank you. Yes, Sandy?
I'm sorry, back to Ms. McLaughlin's on the Park Authority Board. Do you also want to know the history on renaming Justice Park from Jeb Stuart Park? They did it, they did it together.
Oh, it occurred at the same time?
Well, it was two, it was different meetings, but they were, they were, they were considering both in, in the same timeframe. In the same, I mean, do you want to know?
Yeah, I, no, absolutely. Anything we can learn to do this process better.
So, yeah, so, so just to add up there, and Justice Park.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right, number nine, first step? Number eight, clarify, yeah, I think we already mentioned that, right? We'll, oh, I'm sorry, we'll coordinate. Yes. Well, that's, number eight, we've already, right, this is, that's all in, in the category of the superintendent will clarify the.
And also in number eight, the policy already in the role of the school board, it's very clear in, in the policy and responsibility of the school board, which is Roman numeral three in the policy.
I'm sorry, Karen, what do you mean, number eight? Tell us what you want us to do.
I thought that that Ryan said something similar to the top, so I didn't know if that was necessary or not.
I'd actually like to keep number eight for staff, just for our own recording of this, to keep Karen's piece. I think I've got Ryan's, but I know we have Ryan's, but I just want to keep Karen's if we could.
So I do want to comment on seven, because my, my comment was to remove the phrase compelling need, since I'm currently on the government, governance committee.
Yes.
I, I guess I would be able to, to state that, but.
Couple of moments ago, and I didn't catch it, we said we could get rid of the word compelling need as long as we put in, it says, delete the phrase, and then to ensure.
I understand, but my comment during this discussion was that that word, that phrase, even if you wrap it in the other lovely language, can create problems.
So I think what we're saying is governance committee to delete the phrase compelling need.
Okay. It didn't say that before, thank you.
It did not, you're right.
But it says define or delete, but yeah.
Yes, seven was actually what I had, and it got added on to, so I didn't want to lose that meaning, that that phrase needs to leave. Thank you.
Okay.
No, 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 you want my stuff there, which is adding in the inclusive, respectful learning environment.
And incorporate.
Yeah, incorporate.
And incorporate. And incorporate. Good, okay.
For the policy review, yeah, something along the lines, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, number eight, clarify the authority of the board, we talked about that, right? Number nine, first step should be to decide if the board.
This is just, for part of the reg, I mean, we, we need to have, as part of the process, how we decide whether to do it, and then we need to decide, you know, once we've decided to do it, then what's, what's the community engagement process for what the name will be? I mean, those are two separate steps.
Right, so this is to clarify that in the reg, somewhere it should say the board will begin the first month, part of the process by voting to change the name. So if, if, if the board votes to change the name, the next, then, then the first 30-day process will begin.
So, so let me make sure, Sandy, you're asking for clarification in the regulation about the first step?
Right, because the board does have to decide affirmatively, we are going to change a name, right?
But the first step is for the two board members to bring it to the board, then the board votes, then the 30 days and the 30 days.
All of, all of those steps need to be spelled out.
So are we committing to, there's not going to be any public engagement before the board votes to change the?
Of course there is. The usual, the usual public engagement that we always have for our board decisions.
So all, all of these things need to be in the reg, all of the steps.
Okay, well, that was the, that was the next step that I had. I did not see any, any public engagement before the decision of the board. What I saw was a decision of the board, an opportunity for public comment, and then the board confirming its original decision.
So the point of all of this is that the reg should outline all of the steps.
I got it.
You know, starting with community engagement, the decision on whether to change the name, how the community engagement will, on what the name will be, it just needs to outline each of the steps.
Right, but we're not going to have a 30-day period that asks the community, should we change the name? We're not going to do that. We're going to vote to say we're going to change the name. Then we have a 30-day period to suggest names, and then we have a 30-day period to pick the name. That's, that's what the regulation says.
Well, I think number nine needs to, to be more general and just say that the reg will lay out the, the, the different steps in the process.
Yeah, yes.
Including, including the decision by the board.
No, I don't like number 10.
It's not just publicing, it's not just that.
Superintendent is not recommending changes to us, we don't vote on the.
Lay out, lay out all of the, all of the steps in the process, including the decision by the board on whether to change the name. Let's put it that way.
Megan, you have a question about this one?
Yeah, because it, it basically ties into the next step I was hoping for, which goes back to Mr. Wilson's follow-on motion that the board unanimously passed in October 2017, which was that the superintendent and his expert staff were supposed to review what took place with the Justice High School renaming process, identify areas of improvement, and report back to the board with recommendations related to the regulation. So right now, because that never took place, we're all sitting here at a board table right now, trying to figure out, and I'll, I'll send the, the follow-on motion, I'm just going to say, I want the superintendent, as part of his, his revisions to the regulation 8170, to include where we needed those areas of improvement. Part two that I want to share with all of you is, right now, our policy is so vague that literally all it just says is if the board feels the need, they'll, they can change an existing school name. We don't then have any authority to be saying what our expectations are to the superintendent. Everyone's correct, he owns the regulation, we own the policy, and we should be saying in our policy, out of respect for the community, that it is the expectation that if the board's to do this, that there will be a robust community engagement process into it.
Megan, I'm sorry, but you're, I, I'm, I'm trying to keep us to next steps, and I feel like you're going off on another tangent.
Well, no, I'm just worried, because what I keep hearing people say is, we don't need to do anything with our policy, it's all in the reg, but the superintendent owns the reg, well, then he could say, we're going to do something 180 degrees from what the board feels.
Right, but I think, I, I hear you, but I think we're trying to be clear.
So at minimum then, right, that's fine, Ms. Heinz, so number 13 was just supposed to say, the board directed him a year and a half ago to do something, let's, let's do that, let's do that as.
All right, we'll get to that in a minute, because I actually, I mean, I think what the superintendent brought us today is a, a, a result of reviewing what happened with the justice process. And, and, you know, the superintendent didn't write a, an executive summary about, you know, the thinking, right? But the regulation we got is the result of a review of justice and what they think makes more sense. I think the superintendent was clear when he began today talking, so.
Well, I do think that many of our colleagues have made clear, the regulation is lacking a lot, so either superintendent's review wasn't very good, or there needs to be a little bit more analysis done.
Okay, so number nine, Sandy, are you okay with that now?
Yeah, that's fine, although I said September, but the superintendent's telling us he can bring it back sooner.
Yeah, no, so you're on number 10, right? Yeah, let's, let's say.
Sorry, yes, nine is fine.
Okay, then, yeah, not September.
By, by July, end of July?
Yeah, by, right, since it's number 10, superintendent to.
Do you want to commit to the, by the end of July?
By end of July.
End of July, right.
Remember now, what was decided is that board leadership will determine, I may have it done, when you all are going to meet to go over it is for the board to decide.
Yeah, right.
Right, I'm just, just, just saying.
And again, you know, the, we need to understand the regulation and make comments, but it's not ours to vote on, so we don't have to, right. Anyway, 11, send policy to governance to make recommendations to board, we already, you can, we already talked about that, we don't need that. Determine where community engagement begins. I think, I, to my mind, the reg is clear on that. What are you asking?
It's not at all clear, in fact, it really actually didn't even say it, it just said there's a 30-day period. It didn't say what's going to happen, how it's going to happen, when it's going to happen, are you going to have any community engagement? What's the community engagement process ahead of, we're still at, I mean, fundamentally, what the, what the regulation says is, two board members can decide to change the name of a school, we'll vote on it, the comment period opens for 30 days for the public, and then we'll vote on it again. I mean, that's, that's really what it says. And that's, there's no authentic public engagement driving the conversation with the board and the vote ultimately of the board, so.
Tom, your microphone.
Yeah, I think my, my point was just, reading number 10, we've already, we've already tasked the superintendent to come to us with a detailed description of public engagement processes to be followed.
That's fine, I mean, as long as, as long as it's built into, what was originally brought to us today didn't say where the public gets to, to comment. It says where the board makes the decision, and then the public comments on the board already having made the decision, and then the board confirms its decision later. It's basically the board ratifying its decision after a public comment period, as opposed to making it in collaboration with the public.
Well, I think, I'll just push back a little bit on that, because I think what the reg does is it adds a layer of public engagement above what we ordinarily do. And we have, when, when we put something for new business, we have our usual public engagement that we always have for every decision that we make. So I, I think the idea is that the reg says we add a layer of public engagement to get suggestions for names, and then we add a layer of public engagement before we actually choose the name. You know, an, an extra layer of public engagement above what we usually do. But, so Superintendent Brayburn, if you said determine where community engagement begins, I think if you clarify the reg, that will probably clarify it for us.
What Elizabeth is asking, I, I understand what she's asking, and maybe, maybe we should talk about it for a minute, even though I know it's 6:30. She is saying, for example, I could clarify in the reg, that two board members could bring forth the idea to rename. Then there could be some time before the board would take the vote on renaming, then there's time after the renaming to determine, right? So there could, there could be greater clarity about putting in one more thing before the vote. The, the meeting at which the two board members present the idea of renaming is separate from, the reg could have a separate board meeting to then decide to rename. Instead of the way it is now, it could be read that you could initiate and vote that same evening. That's what I hear you saying.
The reason I brought this up, think about the K-12 insight, presentation we had earlier today about the difficulty, like, some people were able to respond by the email that was sent to them, but some people weren't. Some people needed the kiosks in the school, some people wanted to respond by a paper response. And it was the ways in which the different members of the community, based on, you know, a whole host of reasons, needed to communicate with us. And the thing that was our lowest score on that survey was not communicating well with the public. And so the very thing that we're talking about doing, well, we're going to just open it up for public, well, what are you going to do? Are you only going to have like an online comment? What we heard this morning is our community can't or is not able to always communicate with us in a singular fashion, and the, that, I forget the term that they use, the dual, whatever, that we're now embedding, is to undo those old practices that, you know, community engagement is done one way, it's our way, and, or it's the highway, and you, if you're in a segment of the population that doesn't get to communicate that way, oh, well.
Thank you. I think what, I think you're, you're making good points about how we communicate with the community. What we're trying to do here, I think, is with this regulation, is to say that we will have special processes when it comes to name changes, right? And we do need to understand, where we don't have a special process, we do what we ordinarily do. That, but, but if Dr. Brayburn says that he will spell that out in the reg and say, you know, there's a, there's a time period between two board members suggesting it and the board voting on it, that, maybe that could help, and I.
Yeah, let me look with staff, we've got two weeks, let me look at staff and figure out what's, what's the clarifying.
And I just want to add, things change, so I don't think it should be too explicitly down to like, the number of tweets we send out, right? So.
And I think there's, there's value in keeping it somewhat, you know, because the, the board members who want to bring this know their communities, you know, and, and will want to do that engagement, you know, in their own way, in some ways, I think. So anyway, those are our next steps. I think this work session is over. Thank you all very much. It's, it's a tough conversation, and I appreciate everyone's participation. Thank you especially to staff for all your work. Do we have an audit work session coming up now? Are we going to do that? Okay, five-minute break.